My name is Taylor Kilgore. I'm the managing editor at Simpson Street Free Press. Again, thank you so much for being here. To all the school board candidates here, all of you in the audience. We really appreciate it. It's very important. I will be your moderator this evening. We also have journalists right here below me who will also ask questions. And I really want to give a big thanks to all of them. We have Nagasi Tespa Michael. He's the Capital Times Education Reporter. We have Logan Rowley. He's the Wisconsin State Journal Education Reporter. Jenny Peake, the Education Reporter for ISMS. And also Angie Anna Nardine. She's our very own editor at Simpson Street Free Press. She's been with us since she was in middle school, but she's currently a student at UW Madison School of Journalism. So also our today's timekeepers are Sarah Useche and Brandon Alvarez. Sarah and Brandon are teachers for one of our bilingual publications, La Prensa Libre de Simpson Street. Like I mentioned to some of the candidates, or to all of them, excuse me, we have, you know, directed questions that are going to be to the specific two candidates for their seats that they can answer. And then also, they each have four yellow cards where they can use for 30-minute rebuttals.
30 seconds.
Excuse me, 30-second rebuttals. Not that long, we'll be here all day. Sorry. We will make a chart for you, no. 30-second rebuttals. They'll have more chances for that. And also, you'll see that the journalists that will answer or ask the questions, all of the candidates will be able to respond to those questions. Also, lastly, there are Spanish speakers, which are SSFP students around the room. So if you need an interpreter, please look out for our shirts if you need somebody to interpret as well. We will get started right away with the first question. There will be one-minute closing statements, so no opening statements for that, but one-minute closing statements. And we'll start with Angie Anna's question.
This is for TJ and Ananda. As you know, Simpson Street has framed several candidate questions around the DPI data recently published by Lori Frost, Jeff Enriquez, and others in the community surrounding student proficiency in reading and math. If you are elected, what would you do to make sure that a high school diploma from MMSD reflects bona fide proficiency in basic mathematics skills?
And I'll just say we'll start with TJ for the one-minute response, and then Ananda can follow.
I really appreciate the work that's been done by both Simpson Street Free Press and Lori Frost and Jeff Enriquez tying our graduation data to our standardized test score data on literacy. And I want to emphasize literacy, not just reading. Standardized test score data isn't the full picture. And I think that particularly with our students with IAPs, it doesn't quite capture them. But the question is, what will I do? And what will I do is that I think that we need to make sure that our credit recovery programs are strong, because a lot of these students are graduating and getting their graduation credits through our credit recoveries programs. And many of these are computer-based. And often, it's throwing students in front of a computer screen, and they work through things and check their answers on Google and things like that. So we have to make sure that those are strong. We have to make sure that our students who are graduating through IAPs, through individual education plans, are having real goals tied to academic progress.
And I just want to reiterate that Sarah and Brandon, they will be putting up a 15-second blue card and a pink or red times-out card.
What I have witnessed specifically at the high school level is students reading at far below grade level and still getting promoted. And what the interventions that are happening in middle school and high schools can only go so far. But often, students are missing important breakdown concepts for reading, for literacy, even to engaging with text. So one of the things that I wanted to work on, emphasize once elected, is to making sure that we're catching students really early on in elementary school instead of just waiting until the high school for remedial work. And then for the students with IAP, we really needed to work a little bit more diligently with the progress reports, specifically around reading.
Thanks, TJ. Would you like to use this?
Yeah, I didn't get to the hard question, which is asked. I want to add that we really need to look at the quality of our alternative programs. There's a lot of pressure right now to expand our alternative programs, but we haven't looked at the quality and qualities of them and what kind of education students are receiving within them. So that's another place where I would go and go and have gone and have worked at.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to use their yellow card for this question? All right, great. All right, so this next question is for Ali and David. And we will start with Ali for this question. So I know that you, Ali, are somewhat skeptical about using too many standardized tests. But I also know we all agree that learning to read, so a student can then read to learn, is crucial for all young people. Looking at the recent Black Excellence Op Ed piece published in Simpson Street Free Press and the Black Excellence Plan posted recently by the Madison School District administrators, are we, our community and our district, doing enough? Are we recognizing significantly the urgency of now? If elected, with what urgency will you view our district's low reading scores?
I think that literacy is a right, is a civil right. I think that your education is something that empowers you throughout your life and that the great thing about giving someone an education is that you cannot take it away. I think that in addressing kind of where standardized tests exacerbate gaps, if you look at the ACT, the students who do best on the ACT come from Iowa. The ACT is written in Iowa. And so having tests that young people can navigate is a really relevant part of being able to measure young people's achievement. So having tests that are culturally relevant, having tests that are contributed to by multiple communities, but not emphasizing testing, because the real beneficiaries of standardized testing are the people who sell standardized tests. And so how do we measure our young people's enjoyment of reading? How do we give young people opportunities to explore learning that are relevant to them and speak to their interests?
Thank you, Jasmine. David?
Well, you know, back in the day, I worked for Tommy Thompson, who was happy to endorse me. He seemed to be very up on Madison school issues. It's unbelievable. I always called him a big government conservative. If there was such a thing, he was that. Partly to save the Western Publishing Company of Racine from bankruptcy, but also to help kids read, he would give a free Golden Book, which was published by the Western Publishing Company of Racine, a free Golden Book to every parent of a child born. You could get those statistics from the Department of Health and whatnot to register. Maybe he would send them a free book. The idea being that there would be a book in the house. You know, it's very, I think the Madison schools certainly do a good job of educating professors' kids. But when you have a kid who's never been read to, who maybe doesn't have a book in the house, that's a challenge. I don't think we can step away from standardized tests. I don't think there's anything wrong with learning standardized English either. That's how you succeed.
All right, so the next question is for Chris and Colleen. We will start with Chris. You can go ahead with this question first, and then Colleen. But first, is there anybody who wants to respond with the yellow cards for the last question? Okay, perfect. All right, Chris. Critical to note, considering the previous question, is that research shows that adolescent literacy builds on elementary literacy. Developing the skills of the former is not possible without the foundations of the latter. In fact, up to half of the printed fourth-grade curriculum is incomprehensible to students who read below the grade level. McKenna Kohlenberg wrote this, I quote, by the way, in her reporting. But what role can out-of-school time programs play in addressing reading scores? And what steps can we take as a community to do better and to do more?
So first, out-of-school programs can both provide additional instruction in literacy and the mechanics of learning how to read for our youngest children. Out-of-school time can also provide experiences that don't necessarily involve sitting down with a book, but getting out in the community and having experiences in the world that actually be of kids' foundation for later reading comprehension. Kids need to be able to decode words, but they also need that basis of relationships and experiences so that they have reading comprehension when they get to middle and high school.
Can you second that question?
Sure. So what steps can we take as a community to do better and to do more? We need to do more to support out-of-school time for all of our children and ensure that we are dedicating resources, not just within the schools, but outside of the schools.
Colleen?
I'm going to ask you to just repeat it one more time.
Yes, of course. So critical to note, considering the previous question, is that research shows that adolescent literacy builds on elementary literacy. Developing the skills of the former is not possible without the foundations of the latter. In fact, up to half of the printed fourth-grade curriculum is incomprehensible to students who read below that grade level. And this is a specific quote from McKenna Kohlenberg, an editor at Simpson Street and also a law student at UW Madison. So the question is, what role can out-of-school time programs play in addressing reading scores? And what steps can we take as a community to do better and more?
So let me start with the last part of that question first. There is a study called the 30 Million Words Study. There have been others similar to it that have been done, but it looks at the difference between a college-educated family and a family that's not, and how college-educated families generally expose their children to 30 million more words by the time that child's age four. Word exposure, vocabulary development starts very early. In order for us to really address those issues, we have to get the children before they get into kindergarten. And unfortunately, we're not doing that. There are no standards that the district has for its current 4K program, other than in writing. And so I think there's an opportunity there to address more deep learning for kids and literacy in the community. We can have book clubs, things that are exciting to young people, book clubs around their interests also. Not every kid is interested in just picking up any old book. That's one way. There's just constant reading and then conversation, parents and folks. The more you talk to children, the more you use words, the better off they'll be in terms of reading, literacy.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to chime in? Great, so we're going to move on to questions from the journalists here. We're going to start with Jenny Peake. Again, she's from ISMS, which is an education reporter and following you all for this election. And so Jenny, would you like to start?
Yeah, thanks. So all of you have pointed to the achievement gap as one of the biggest issues facing the district right now. Can you name a recent action by the district that you think has had success in addressing the gap? And then also name an initiative that you would propose or support that isn't in effect to address it? We'll start with Ali, and then we can work our way down.
Yeah, so I think I am pretty deeply critical of most of the ways we have tried to address the achievement gap over the course of my lifetime. However, I think expansion to early childhood education is one of the more significant things that we can do in terms of addressing the achievement gap. So I think introducing 4K in recent history. I would really like to see 4K be full-day, because I think I can say that it is something that addresses inequity in terms of exposing young people to early childhood education. However, who has access to taking their children to school for two hours a day and being able to provide transportation around that and having a work schedule that accommodates that furthers disparities? And so I think 4-day full-day is a really important step in the right direction in terms of addressing the achievement gap. I also think arts every day is a way for our young people to have more robust opportunities in theater and dance and more opportunities to express themselves. And I think there's a large gap in who gets to take piano lessons, who gets to participate in ballet, who gets to see themselves on stage.
Well, I'm for anything that's going to draw a student in, a young person, to get interested in education on this end. But I think on this other end, too, you have to have a firewall that says, we're going to have order in the classroom. So this is a chance for me to get my little pitch in. If nothing else, there are kids in that classroom that would like to learn. I'm just very worried and disturbed by statements that middle school students made at the Lakeside Library, where they said, "We don't have to listen to the police." And they didn't listen to the librarian. I have to say that if you listen to the teacher, you might learn something. You might find something that you hear that is going to catch your attention, but it's not fair to the other kids to break up the class. And I just, one program, and it's so basic, and that is for this school district administration to stand behind its teachers when they try to restore order, not throw them under the bus before they've gotten all fast. We've seen a couple of cases that recently. I have to think that that's very disheartening to our teachers, who are trying to move heaven and earth to inspire their children.
Yeah, I'll start with what I think the district is doing first. Did you start? Okay. One is freshman development, they're providing the teachers. This is a lot better than what they were doing before. Planning time that some schools are giving for, you know, for teachers is also, I think it's helping. But when you look at the numbers, the numbers aren't moving as much. And I tell people, you know, there's a science to this, you guys. There's art to it, too. But if we send the children, if we send children to school already a year or two behind academically, chances are they are going to already continue to be behind. So early education, early intervention is important. We also have to have strong leaders in our schools and know how to push teachers and also create a culture of success. When in our schools, we've got to have teachers that are prepared and ready to do that, but also supportive in doing that. And we've got to have a curriculum that doesn't change so frequently. And that's something that our district has struggled with, was a lot of the multiple changes that teachers are actually required to do. And it takes time to get good at anything.
So in June 2017, I was part of a group that worked to pass a budget amendment to reduce class sizes in the lower grades and high-poverty elementary schools. And we know class size makes a difference, particularly for kids experiencing poverty and kids of color. I did hear from parents at the schools that we were targeting with this class-size amendment, and things got better. Kindergarten classes of 20, 21, 22, kids were down to 17 or 18. And it made a difference in terms of teachers' ability to pay attention to kids and help them. In terms of an initiative I would propose, my daughter was in the African-American History Bowl, done by the 100 Black men a few years back, when she was in eighth grade. And it was amazing. She learned so much black history. And I would love to see the district make a more concerted effort to incorporate black history into the history curriculum.
I would say the, I'm a fan of the community schools model. I think it's a way to bring stakeholders to the school building, provide ownership from parents and also the community to the building, to the instruction, increase our capacity to work well with our partners, increasing and leverage our resources in the community, and then both satisfy needs of children and also the adults, bringing more culturally relevant programming and creativity on the ways in which we interact with language and literacy. And one of the things that I would propose is co-teaching models and universal design learning models, which address the needs of students with IAPs as well as with students, advanced learner students.
Things that are working. The Read Up partnership we've had, which does put books in kids' hands and has been, the info date on it from the last couple of summers has been very successful. We're expanding that. Class sizes, smaller class sizes always help. And unfortunately, we're kind of going backwards on that a couple of years ago. They continue to grow, and the targeting to higher-poverty schools continues to be less accurate. Early childhood stuff always works. Things that haven't worked, I think our one-to-one laptop program, I think it's an overinvestment in technology. I think that we're using not just scripted curricula, but computer programs that aren't really effective in hitting lifelong literacy and mathematics and literacy goals. I also think that questions of stress in the classroom, and some of that is the behavioral issues, where we don't have proper places to redirect students and proper staffing. Some of it has to do with undue pressures from test scores. I've seen insane emails sent to staff about winter map testing and how important it is, when it really isn't all that important.
Thank you. Jenny, can you go on to your next question?
So MMSD currently has two instrumentality charter schools, Nostra Mundo and Badger Rock. What roles do these schools play in the educational landscape in Madison? And if on the board, are there other schools you would like to see added as instrumentaltities of the district?
Yeah, let's start with TJ. We'll go down.
I'll start, all right? We have two. I think that, you know, as instrumentality charter schools, they essentially function as district schools. There's no difference in how we fund them. There's no difference in how we staff them. They have, what they have is some advantages in terms of that the students self-select to come in there. The families have an extra commitment that doesn't exist in many of our schools, where we have highly, and they can also, they don't have to take highly mobile students. And they don't take students mid-year. So they have advantages like that. And they also have kind of the community-building and fundraising advantages that our other schools don't have. What we should do is we should evaluate their successes and failures very, very well. We haven't done that. And what we can learn from them. I think that we have Badger Rock coming up soon, and Badger Rock's been very, very difficult, and successes have been limited. It's incredibly small and incredibly inefficient school in terms of dollars per student, and so, and the results have not been great. So I think that we have to look very closely at our evaluation of them. And I think we have to also evaluate any charter proposals better than we have and write better contracts.
Could be the last part of the question. No, that's okay. So if on the board, are there any other schools you would like to see made instrumentaltities of the district? So would you expand?
Okay. Yeah, my priority is not to expand, but I do think that they have played a really important role. My daughter is an alum of Nostra Mundo Community School, which was the first immersion school program in Madison School District. And instrumentality schools can serve as a laboratory to see what works and what, you know, and to be a testing ground. I would say that, defer from my opponent regarding Badger Rock. Badger Rock really struggled for a long time because it had a really inefficient principle that the entire school community tried to push that principle out for the last, for the three years remaining of that principle. Once that principle was replaced, we've been seeing great results in the way that the community has been responded, the families, how they are appreciated, and how students are engaging in the classrooms and in the community. And specifically because it's a project learning school, they have been showing really great ways in which they engage with the parents.
So I think one role of instrumentality charter schools in our district is that there's a lot of strong community voice in those schools. They're actually an opportunity to model how the community cannot just be engaged with schools, but actually have a role in school leadership that I think all of our schools would benefit from. In addition, they do act as a laboratory for innovations that sometimes move into our regular schools, like DLI. Badger Rock, despite their struggles, is doing some really cool stuff with urban agriculture that we could perhaps use for hands-on agricultural learning in other schools. I am hesitant to add more instrumentality charter schools. If a really amazing proposal came before the board, I would of course consider it. But I think for any charter school, you have to consider the impact of that school on the kids who are not in the charter school, as well as for the kids who are in the school. If a charter school is going to draw down enrollment, hurt our staffing capacity for our regular neighborhood schools, then I don't think it's a good idea.
You know, Madison doesn't know how to support public charter schools. Whether instrumentality or not, I chaired, like, middle schools board when they had to make the transition to the new state law, which really doesn't support the idea of existing instrumentality schools. People should look at the new law. They were not ready to make that transition because the system wasn't set up for that. And even the proposal that we had to answer to was not a quality proposal. And I sat on the advisory board of the National Association of Chartered School Authorizers, which has quality standards for authorizing, which Madison does not implement. And so we don't do a good job of that. And the schools will tell you, if you talk to Nostra Mundo or Badger Rock, that if they had the option, they would do it on their own. The district does not provide good enough support to those schools. So you guys, I really think that people draw their opinions about what should happen and what shouldn't happen. We are, we should be, as part of elected officials, required to really look into the data and talk to people on the ground because they would tell you, it's not going very well.
You know, I think that, my, um... The state Wisconsin has an interest in seeing that citizens are educated. It does not need to be through public schools. And I know that we have some people up here who are very much opposed to vouchers. I very much am a fan of George Bush seniors, a thousand points of light. There are so many ideas out there, so many different ways that people can learn. And this district has been, it's interesting, kind of a one-size-fits-all. I know they've tried different things, but they're really control-free. Clean Carrick started his school. He was rebuffed at the district level. It's to the shame, the eternal shame on the Madison schools that he was. So I, my whole thing is, I want to be on the Madison school board. I want to up our game, instrumentality, non-instrumentality. Although I'm not sure what non-instrumentality means anymore with Act 10.
I think our instrumentaltities have created some of the most sought-after programming in the district. So dual-language immersion is one of the most competitive things folks can get into. And I think ultimately, we should look at, what does it mean to be a district that is 100% dual-language immersion over the course of the next 20 years? So what does it look like to standardize learning multiple educations throughout early childhood? We have talked a lot about young people being pulled out of the district. I think we don't emphasize enough the things that folks are excited about within the district. And I think what folks are excited about is new opportunities and diverse approaches to learning. Because we serve a really diverse population of young people. I think having schools that emphasize the arts. I think having schools that emphasize language. I think having schools that give young people a variety of opportunities within education is a necessity in terms of serving our community in its entirety. I also think that the district is growing. And so we have this unique opportunity in this moment to build more schools and to have those schools informed by best practices and new methodology and approaches to learning.
Thank you. Colleen, you all have 30 seconds.
I think we have to start with what we want our children to be prepared for, and then start to think about what type of schools do we need and how best do we deliver those types of schools and that type of education to young people. We get so caught up in whether it's public or charter, we never get down to the fundamental problem of what's happening with our children. Now, a question for you guys to consider. If only 9% of your children were graduating from high school or were reading at grade level by the time they graduated high school for 25 years, would you consider continuing to put your child in that school? I'll tell you, white families in this community are answering that middle-class life by leaving the school district altogether. So who are we talking about and what are we talking about?
Thank you. David, go ahead.
What I'm building on there a little bit, too. We do have, I'd like to show this chart here. If you can see it from here, but this is Madison. The growth in Madison enrollment over the last 25 years since 1995 has been 7.7%. That's Madison right there. Here's McFarland. And what they're doing with McFarland, that there is something right. Some Currie, and they are probably going to vote for another second high school. I'm a Some Currie high school grad. We had 640 kids in the high school. I didn't make my point, did I?
Thank you. And then Jenny has one more question.
So while the initial goal of the district's behavior education plan was to move away from exclusionary forms of discipline, after five years, the plan has failed to result in fewer suspensions at the middle and high school level. On Monday, March 18th, the board passed changes to the plan. What do you think about those changes? What would you have changed? And what would you like to see from the future of the BEP?
Let's go the opposite way. Ali?
Yeah, so I think the important thing to understand about the behavior education plan is that it wasn't created in a vacuum. The behavior education plan replaced the Student Code of Conduct. Under the Student Code of Conduct, the number-one reason that a child was suspended was insubordination. We don't send our children to school to be subordinate. We don't send our children to school to be dominated. We send our children to school to learn to think for themselves. And so I think moving towards inclusive practices, moving towards positive reinforcement is a great idea. I think the problem with the behavior education plan is the staffing of the behavior education plan, as well as the implementation of the behavior education plan. I also think that the behavior education plan was not created collaboratively enough with faculty or leadership within individual schools in order for folks to feel like they had ownership. The last thing I'll say about the behavior education plan is I believe seriously that it puts too much onus on the educator around a child's behavior. And we need to equip our young people with the skills that they will need throughout their lives to resolve conflict independently.
Well, I look at the behavior education plan as both problem and symptom. It is actually causing more problems than it was if it had never existed. It's 82 pages. They maybe tweaked that a little bit, five levels of responses. It's gotten to the point now where the teacher almost has to resort to outside intervention in their own classroom because they don't have control of their own classroom. That's a real problem. Only the teacher is going to know the particular dynamics of the kids in that classroom. So we've seen fewer kids suspended. Our school suspensions have decreased. So that's regarding... So that's regarded as a, as a positive. But the number of behavioral incidents has increased. Well, guess what? The kids aren't being taken out of class that are causing problems. I really challenge the journalists on this panel to find out what actually goes on in a resorted justice room. Because I don't know, I've had teachers that we've heard them say, Karen Vee, that Sherman, that restoration never happens. It's nap time in room 140.
I'm going to end my comment, but I'm just going to play this so you guys can hear it. This is real short. This is what I'm talking about. So I play that for you. That's my school. Those are all 90 of my kids. Even the one-year-olds are in this room. And we are building a strong culture of excellence among our children from the root to the tree roots. And that's what the Madison School District needs to do. We keep talking about behavior education plans, which are, even in interpretation, are very strict plans because schools have to follow these rules. But we're not building a culture of excellence, an ethos of excellence in our children. So what are they behaving well for? So I really want to see our schools develop a strong school culture plan that everyone in the school is involved in setting the values of that plan, the structure of that plan, and what do we see our children doing and what do we want them to do going forward? And that's how we should interact with them and hold them accountable.
Amen.
So I want to actually let Ali use her yellow card. I will try my best with these full group questions to let the opponents use their cards right away if they want. So Ali, you can go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to speak to the fact that the behavior education plan has not resulted in fewer suspensions. It hasn't resulted in fewer exclusionary practices. It hasn't resulted in less use of restraint and seclusion. I would also like to say that I have never seen a study that has shown us that when more kids are suspended, other kids learn better. In fact, the increase in suspension is disruptive to all students. So young people seeing their students, their fellow students pushed out of class has a damaging impact on the entire community.
David, you go ahead.
Well, at first, you know, it's got to the point now where some of the school board meetings are raucous. And I guess I say that, and I hope you saw this cartoon from the Wisconsin State Journal. And it's, it's basically says, this is what democracy looks like, is shut it down. I have so many people who refuse to go back to a school board meeting because they've been, they've been harassed and intimidated. And school board can't keep order in a, school board meeting? How are they going to keep order in a classroom? We have too many chaotic classrooms. Can't learn.
All right, Chris, go ahead.
So I was not impressed with the changes to the BEP. I went to a bunch of the ad hoc committee meetings where they brought in staff and administrators from different schools to talk about both the challenges they were facing in their schools and also solutions they had come up with in their schools. It was actually really interesting to sit in some of these things. And I felt like what they finally came up with for a revised BEP was just tweaks to the old BEP. It didn't substantially change how we work. And more importantly, what people were asking for in those meetings was more staffing to serve our most vulnerable students who might be causing most of the disruptions in a school. More social workers, more counselors, more psychologists, more mental health services for kids. There's no meaningful funding behind those recommendations. So I was not impressed with the process.
Like implementation of many of the MMSD plans, I have not been impressed with the BEP as well. It's definitely, has from the very beginning a clunky implementation and had alienated many community members that were really pro-changing the student behavior code of conduct. It has eliminated the multiple staff and also the students. I believe that if we wanted to have a comprehensive plan that addressed behaviors, we needed to have the voices of our teachers and the voices of our students and the voices of our parents and the community as being key part of that, that process. What I also observed with the BEP is that the, both the teachers and the staff that knew how to navigate well, the clunky plans from the district, they continued to do okay. And the ones that were really set up to continue to punish students or find ways to punish students, they were able to do that with the BEP.
Huge question. I might actually use one of my yellow cards on this one. I believe in the concept that we try to limit exclusionary practices and that we give students supports when they aren't ready to be in a classroom. Unfortunately, we haven't given them the right supports. And we're returning students to classrooms where they continue to be disruptive and they continue to interfere with the learning of other people. I am voted against the recent revision of the BEP. I think it's an improvement in many ways, but I think there were three huge things that were left off the table. One was the full integration of special education interventions within the BEP. Number two was the whole, the whole issues around bullying and how we treat bullying and how it is integrated in. And number three is that the BEP has this promise of better systems. If I look at internal data, I see students who have over 80, not even special education students, over 80 level-two disruption behavior incidents in a year. And I'm going to use my card to finish this, in, in a year. And they are not, clearly if they're repeating this behavior, they are not getting the supports. They are not getting the interventions they need to fix that. I voted against that. Two of the amendments I offered was, was that we should have, we should measure whether students think that they solve problems constructively and less than 40% do. And less than 40% of our staff and students believe that the consequences in the BEP are fair. No one's going to work under a system they don't believe is fair. So we need different people at the table to get at those issues.
Another, go ahead.
The, one other thing, once selected, I wanted to make sure that we eliminate top-down approaches and the BEP is a reflection of that. And one way that I would do this is to actually have direct contact with the student services folks that were proposing the changes for the BEP. I know personally that some of them were not contacted or were alienated, which makes us, or myself as a parent, distrust the process.
All right, great. So we will move on to our next journalist from the Wisconsin State Journal, Logan O'Rourke. Who was the K-12 Education reporter. He has some questions for you too.
If elected, would you support the district expanding its 4K offerings to full-day programs? If so, how would you implement the change?
This is for, this is, sorry, this is for all of the candidates. TJD, Mike, go first.
I guess I'll go. I think that it's worth creating full-day 4K, at least one or two in every high school area. I think that we don't have the space nor the funding, though Evers budget does propose full-day 4K funding to do it district-wide. We don't have the space actually to do it district-wide. So I think we have to be careful about that. But I think that having one or two sites that were accessible with transportation in each, in each high school area is worth exploring. And you have to look at the financials of this, and we have not been offered those. Beyond that, we have a partnership with UW on exploring issues around 4K. And I just want to say I've been greatly, greatly disappointed with the statistical analysis that they've done and how they, and it's just been a, they're asking the wrong questions and they're using the wrong data and they're presenting it bad, and it's very frustrating.
I'm in full support of the expansion of the 4K. The way in which I would, starting implementation is looking at where are the greatest inequities in our school district? And it's starting from that and making sure that we gain support from the community and the, and the parents. Oftentimes, families don't receive the information they need in order to enroll, you know, receive information of what the options are, what they needed to do and prepare to ensure that they are better prepared for, for school, for engaging in schools. And I think that needs to change in our, in our school district. A school district with so many wealth resources need to be able to have parents that have the information needed in order to navigate to school that, that they can advocate for their students, particularly for students with special education services. There's been like a constant struggle, and I deal with that in my work, where sometimes parents of high schoolers are still trying to negotiate the system in the schools. So we needed to figure it out, to do that in the very beginning in the 4K level. Thank you.
I too fully support the move to full-day 4K with the stipulation that we need to, like, we can't just abandon MMSD. I think full-day 4K has the potential to provide stability for children, especially our highly mobile children. I think it's also just a very logical gap closing move. We know that kids come to kindergarten with the achievement gap in place. So if we can do early childhood education and do it well, we might be able to start closing the gap early. However, how I would implement 4K, I think it's really important for little people that they have lots of time to play and socialize. And I would not want this to be a rigorous academic experience. I mean, they need to get basic literacy, they need to get some basic numeracy, but it needs to mostly be about play and experiential learning.
So we're, so I'm doing this now. We're the first school outside of mainland China to implement the Anji Program. And my preschool director and principal are going there for the residency on Thursday, Wednesday. We also have, she was stubborn, like, come with me when I go because we're trying to fully implement this in Madison. But here's what we're working on now, and what I will continue as a member of the school board. 4K is not enough. We have full-day 4K. We believe preschool should be free for every family in the state of Wisconsin, regardless of race or income. So what I've been doing is traveling the country. I've been to California, New York, DC, to meet with donors to actually allow us to implement a pilot of fully funded preschool education for five years in the city of Madison, but tied to quality standards that our state implements through the Department of Children and Families and utilizing existing funds that are already here to also help pay for it. So as a member of the school board, I will show people how this can be done as a full-school-wide system in order to do this. Because without it, you guys are not going to closely achieve yet.
If elected to the school board, I promise that this will be my first motion. And that will be to name Colleen Carr as our new superintendent of education in our school. I'll tell you what, I mean, seriously, we, we have to get at these young kids. And that's what he's doing over there at One City Schools. Just when they're young, I talked about these golden books that Tommy would give us. Little kid, they always seem to hold that little book upside down, you know? It doesn't seem to matter, the young book. And introduce them to this stuff when they're young. I often say if my mother put a tuba into my hands when I was young, I'd be a world-class concert tuba player today. Seriously.
So I've already talked about the importance of early childhood education. I think one of the things to look to, and Logan and I greatly appreciate this question, is the Milwaukee Project, which is where we got head start, right? The Milwaukee Project examined, was a nature versus nurture study. And it looked at young people who are growing up in poverty, who didn't have any intervention, and what their IQ would look like, and their IQ was similar to that of their parents. They then looked at the sibling of that child and provided ongoing educational intervention for the first four years of that young person's life. Those young people have an average IQ at the end of that four years, 144. So the importance of early childhood intervention cannot be underestimated. I think that full-day 4K offers us an incredible opportunity to have mixed-age classrooms. I believe that we should embrace full-day 4K, not because some kids are coming into school behind, but because we have an opportunity to reimagine education and seize kind of this exponential amount of growth that young people experience in early childhood.
So for the district's highly mobile student population that may switch schools once or multiple times within a school year, are there additional supports the district could offer students to ensure stability and success in these students' education?
We're going to switch it up just a little bit. We'll start with Colleen, and then we'll go with David and Ali, and then we'll work our way from Chris to Matt.
Yeah, I think the district is starting, has started a process of trying to create some commonality between the different curricula offered in the schools and also the sequencing of that curriculum. So when one kid moves from one school to another and following the residential patterns, where children who are poor tend to move, that they're somehow close to where they should be academically in the program that they're moving into. Madison used to struggle with that. So that's something that, that we are implementing. But we also have to place a larger focus on families. We often talk about poverty and how many poor people are you serving? And people judge me based on that too. They judge schools. And I'm told, but if you look at my school from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, if the poverty of my parents is the same, I haven't done my job. I'm actually trying to eliminate the number of children, families who are living in poverty. And I think to address some of that mobility, schools have to partner with community organizations to help parents get jobs, help them advance in their employment, help them get mental health support and things that they need in order to succeed and move their families forward. And without that, we'll continue to not see the success we want.
You know what? We, we have big brothers and big sisters. Sometimes I think the family needs a big brother, somebody who is, can monitor them a little bit, someone they can call on and help them through life. We did, when I was on county board, we did Joining Forces for Families, which I think is somewhat a similar concept. And that is, you have the schools working with the police, working with social services. Or you have, and we took care of children with, who were abused and neglected, for instance, in one of the functions. In fact, most of the spending on social services done through Dane County. So certainly, problems don't stop at the schoolhouse door. Usually their child brings those problems with him or her from home. And the home is a very important aspect of helping that child succeed, maybe break that cycle of poverty.
Yeah, so I think we have to talk about highly mobile communities as diverse communities and why students move or why students experience housing instability happens for a lot of different reasons. The average age of a homeless person in Madison, Wisconsin, or in Dane County is nine years old. The majority of people who are homeless in this community are children. They're children who have a single mother who has, you know, three or more kids. And so, I think we can't have a one-size-fits-all approach to a population of young people who is significantly large and incredibly diverse. I think providing school stability means providing schools that are enthusiastic and welcoming. I think it also means making sure young people have transportation to school and the ability to stay at one school throughout a year and throughout multiple years. So if you can't find housing stability in the city, you should be able to find stability within your education. I also think that's a great reason to have multi-age classrooms because for students who are moving around a lot, having one teacher over the course of a few years allows for that young person to have a relationship that they can assert and that they can benefit from on an ongoing basis.
Chris, you go ahead.
So, Mr. Vaughn, our district actually does a pretty good job of serving homeless students. It's one of the things we do well. The consistent curriculum has improved, and that is a good thing. But we've almost gone too far the other way. Our curriculum has become so rigid that it's actually difficult for teachers to take a step back and take a step forward and meet students' individual learning needs. So I think we need to have consistency but not rigidity in curriculum. I think staffing at our schools is a big question that relates to how well we serve our highly mobile students. Because schools that have high populations of kids coming in and out, like East High School, class size becomes a real issue. Because you can start here with a normal class size and end up with an enormous class size. This is particularly been an issue in pathways at East because highly mobile students tend to not be in the pathway. So we need to be really thoughtful about how we staff our schools so that highly mobile kids have small class sizes.
Thank you. Very important. Thank you.
I think one of the reasons that I decided to run for office is to add this, the perspective of this very question to the board. I, my daughter, by the time she was in kindergarten, we had moved a lot. And we continued to move a lot until she was in late middle school. And the, you know, definitely felt the impact of that firsthand. And, and one of the things that benefited our family was the resources that our city has and being able to access those resources. And those resources were either informed by the school or by the community, and the community that was supporting the school in some way or another. So I fully support a more comprehensive way in which we do transportation, in which we do partnerships, in which we resource appearance, and how we leverage city, county funding to address the multiple challenges that our family faces in Madison.
This is such a huge issue. I've been saying for years that we have to pay more attention to the transition students make, particularly highly mobile students. When a student comes in in the middle of the year, we can't just show them to their classes and let things go. We have to make sure that we follow up three weeks, six weeks, nine weeks. And by we, I mean the social worker, the principal, the classroom teachers, et cetera, et cetera. Because these are long-term matters. And we follow up and we look for things like, what are the attendance issues? What are the homework issues? What other issues are coming up? Chris mentioned the class sizes, and when we have schools that have a highly mobile population, the class sizes are up and down. Probably as important or equally important certainly is the issue of special education students who are highly mobile. And they come into the schools and they might need one-on-one staffing. And they come into the schools and they might need one-on-one staffing, and the school isn't staffed for that. And if you have two or three of those kids come in, suddenly all the staffing gets pulled towards these kids and the district doesn't respond well. We must, must, must do better with that. Lastly, homelessness, we do do okay with that. And we'll leave it there.
Amanda.
I think, you know, when we talk about the partnership with the city and the county, it's also to understand all the multiple reasons why our families are leaving. And particularly the families with students receiving special education services, one of the reasons is that they don't get the services that they need in that school. So they believe that if they change the school, that they are going to get better services, more service. So that's their way to get another chance for their children, which I completely understand. And often, that family doesn't know how to, or doesn't have, is not well-equipped to navigate the very complex system of IEPs and special education services.
Thank you.
According to DPI data, hundreds of more students transfer out of the Madison School District than those who transfer into it under the state's open enrollment program. Will the district do something differently to attract students and their families to stay within MMSD? If so, what?
Let's start with Ali and work our way all the way down.
Yeah, so I think one of the things that attracts people is innovation within opportunity. And I think we have an opportunity in this current moment to reimagine education. I think that looking at what attracts people to early childhood education, it's not testing. It's, you know, having schools that are well-staffed, it's having opportunities to play embedded within learning, it's having initiatives that are inclusive and celebratory, and also having a district that is willing to have conversations that inform our curriculum and our approach to learning. So talking about methodology and approaches that produces the greatest intellectual growth for young people. I think arts every day is something that would attract a lot of families to MMSD. I think giving young people robust opportunities to express themselves is something a lot of families would be attracted to. But I also think that the benefits of arts every day is something that will attract families. So when young people have the opportunity to express themselves, to participate in dance and theater, and to participate creatively in school, they like being there more and they have far better behavior and better academic achievement.
Well, that is a problem. And, you know, if we're talking about, you know, building referendum, what is that figure, 150 million or so to restore and repair our buildings? We have people voting with their feet, and I showed you this before. We had, I think it was a net difference of 804 students leaving the Madison School District through the open enrollment plan. Now, these are Madison residents, their parents live in Madison. Are they going to vote for a referendum? No, they're not. Here's a lunch lady, Trish Marks. I get this, I am lunch lady of one of Madison's schools that I've employed for almost 15 years. I've seen so many teachers retire early because it's nearly impossible for teachers to do their jobs, and behavior issues are just getting worse. I feel sad for the teachers, the kids are trying to learn with so much disruption, the kids with behavior problems because we have the illusion that can treat teachers and staff, dah dah dah. So, you know, and we have people saying we're moving out. That, if we, that's why I've said if the safer schools equals the safer community. It's also true, I think, that if you have problems in the schools, those problems won't stop the schoolhouse door.
So there are four things that parents generally look at. One is reputation of the school or school district. The other are the results, the educational results of children, whether or not when they go visit, they see happy kids, happy teachers, how they're received. When they're there, and then the beauty of the schools and the environment that those schools are in. Madison has a fairly beautiful environment, but we have a lot of old antiquated schools. And Verona's building a $180 million high school, and some areas building another popular new high school. They're building all these new schools around us. You're seeing more population and faster population growth in the suburbs than you do in the city. City people are moving into high-rise rental properties that aren't going to do much for our tax base to support our schools while people are buying homes in those communities. So we have to look at, do we want to be competitive? And so I'm pushing that we need to build some new schools, and we need to create new innovative options for young people. We need to boost the academic performance dramatically of students of color. And we also have to deal with the browning of the school system. The brown of the school system gets, my families tend to leave. And we need to challenge them by offering something so high-quality that they won't leave.
So first, I think we need to better understand why families are leaving MMSD. We don't do exit interviews of people who leave the district and understanding what's causing them to leave the district would help us. Our high schools are actually places where we sometimes bring students in, like our numbers actually go up in high school. Part of that is because there's not many private options for high school, but part of that is because we offer really amazing electives in our high schools. We offer lots of chances to take classes in social justice and understanding different kinds of history and opportunities to be in the activist club. We have amazing extracurricular offerings and we have good honors and AP classes. And I think these are the kind of things that pull people into MMSD. We need to make sure we protect those things and build on them and not lose them. I appreciate what Kalin said about happy people in the schools. I think schools with happy students and happy teachers have really strong leaders and excellent principals, and that can help keep families in the school.
So Madison does a good job on having a discourse on the many problems that we have. We've been doing that for 35, 55 years, depending who you ask, and we have lots of reports to look at our data. And some people believe in the reports, other people don't believe in the reports, and some people report on the fact that, like, Madison is not the worst, but the second worst. But none of this is helpful, right? And the ways in which we respond to issues in our district has also been reactionary and less undesirable, which then continue to taint our district. I think we have an opportunity now more than ever to reimagine and re-envision how we wanted to do schools, how we wanted to engage in learning, how we wanted to engage with our communities, how we wanted to respond to things that are going wrong. Don't get me right, don't get me wrong, like, when I become, after April 2nd, you know, once elected, you know, the schools are not going to change overnight, you know, things that we're going to still have problems. And the ways in which we respond to those issues is what we're going to be remembered for.
And I promised that I would let the opponent go who wants to use your yellow card. You'll wait? Okay. Then go ahead, TJ.
We've actually been doing slightly better lately than we had in the past, but it is still a problem. One of the things, if you look at the patterns, that a lot of the students who leave because of proximity, the school in a different district is actually closer to their home than an MMSD school. And building might be an answer to that, but I think we need to build in cooperation. In fact, this week, the city is considering a building. Middleton School District will be building a school within the city of Madison in the next year. So we have to look at those proximity issues and we have to figure that out. But I think that, you know, you can attract people with all these innovations, and these are all wonderful, but retaining people requires being open, making people partners, building trust, having them feel that they have a say in how the school goes forward in the problems. Behavior education plan is one issue, principal hiring is another issue. These are places where our district has pushed away people's input. And, you know, and we see after there's one of these issues that a school like Blackhawk or a school like Leopold, people start to leave again. And so we have to treat people with trust and work with them, not to them.
Kalin, would you still like to wait?
No.
Okay. Great.
Well, I would.
Do you want, okay, go ahead, David.
Just simply to say, if you read the, you know, obviously, and I really applaud especially young journalists with the Simpsons, the Free Press, you know, I also was an ink-stained wretch for 18 of my years, including 12 at the Capital Times. So I'm with you in the spirit, and I guess I still feel like I'm a journalist because I try to look at things objectively. But what are the headlines that you read? We have chaos in the school board. You don't think that people are reading that in Middleton and Oregon and they're thinking about where am I going to put my kids? We've got to stop that. We've got to improve that.
How far are we in the questions? So Nagasi will ask the next three questions, and then we have four more. All right, so Nagasi, like I said, will ask the next question. Again, he's the education reporter for the Capital Times.
These questions are for all of you. The first one, when was the last time you visited a Madison school to talk with students? In what ways, as a school board member, do you plan to engage with students about the issues they care about?
Let's start with Chris, who received this one. And then we'll go to the left of Chris. Start with Amanda next.
I think the last time I was in a school for a significant amount of time talking to kids was in December when I was working with the kids in the memorial forensics program as a judge. Coming into the schools for any reason to help out kids is a great opportunity to engage with kids about what's going on with their education, what's going on with their building, what they really care about. The stuff I hear from memorial kids over and over again is the condition of their building and how they would like to have a much better facility to learn in. That's the big one.
You have one minute.
So I work for the Department of Public Instruction, so I have, I like to be invited, you like to be invited to the schools, just, yes, for professionalism. But the last time I was there was last month for the Read Your Heart Out. I tried to attend my daughter's school, LaFollette, quite frequently, and I have been invited to both speak to parents, sometimes to just be with young people in multiple schools, in Madison, like North Ramondo, East, for different topics. Anything, you know, oh, I arrived at a school last year, too. They had a graduation of their parent leadership, and they invited me to be their keynote because when I was working for the school district, I helped implement the program that both bilingual parents and African-American parents engaged in order to become better advocate for their children. It's a great question. Thank you so much, Nagasi.
I think the last time I was in the school was west in November. And I think the second part of the question is, what do you learn and how do you interact with students? And, you know, sometimes you observe, and you observe how students, their body language, how they are towards each other, how they are towards you, how they are towards the staff and faculty. Sometimes you certainly listen, and you listen to what they don't say as well as what they do say. And you, you know, and what their ideas are. And, you know, when I talk to students, I try not to guide them with the questions I ask because too often, the student voice is structured through the preconceptions and ideas of our administrators and our adults. And the genuine ideas that come out from students get put in a box, and it's just like what comes out of the Doyle Building. And that's not right. If we want student input, we need student input that is based on their own insights.
We'll go with Kalin next.
So I've been in Whitehorse, LaFollette, East, West, Hamilton, Jefferson in the last week, and I'll be going to Hawthorne next week. And several others. I live in the school with you guys. That's my work. It's what I do. But what I'm hearing from young people, I had some great conversations with young people at LaFollette, the things that they want from us, they want more visibility, they want to be seen, they want to be heard, they want more support, academic support. Some of the kids were telling me that they couldn't get support, they were told by their teachers and counselors unless they had IEPs, which also connected me to the history of Madison when I worked in the district. And they would put kids in special education and give them more help. And so we have these high rates of special needs kids, teachers of color, if that's for me, needed teachers of color in the schools. And then they want both general acts, general acts of respect from their educators, people who act like they actually care about them, that's how they feel. And then lastly, they want to have access to opportunities out of the community, and a lot of them don't do anything when they go to school, go home.
Kids probably not so much, I'll be quite honest about it. I've talked to principals, John Storrs recently at LaFollette. I've certainly talked to, not the current, but the, some of the past SROs who've had that job. And I'm hearing from many teachers and parents, and I think that's very valuable. And what I hear overwhelmingly is they want, they want order in the classroom, they want their kids to be safe, and they want their kids to be able to learn in a calm environment. And like I talked about before, if you have, certainly to engage students, that's the best answer, but there has to be that firewall that will keep those children safe in that classroom and order. Otherwise, teachers are leaving. I've had, one teacher said she went to Middleton, she couldn't stand the F-bombing in her class that's over grades you teach. She said first grade. That's a problem, and we're hearing that at the school board, too. It's unbelievable that you go to a school board meeting and hear all the F-bombing from young people. That's a problem. I think it's a symptom.
I'm in the schools on a regular basis and quite frequently. I recently participated in Human Rights Week at East High School, in which young people were bringing in speakers about topics that they were interested in, so I was invited in to speak about consent culture. And one of the things I heard from students over and over again is that they're not getting relevant information in health classes or sex education or human growth and development, and they're definitely not seeing an emphasis on relationships or consent in that area. And so I think that's an area that we want to improve on intensively because that's about giving our young people the skills to treat one another with respect and dignity. I was recently in our elementary schools, and I think one of the things I see, you know, a common thread in schools and at Doyle is that I see people working really hard. I see educators, you know, spending their lunch break hosting chess club. I see folks staying after school and coming before school to give students additional help. And so I think our schools are often seen through a lens of iniquity and often seen through critique. And I think there's real areas of celebration within our schools, and also it's a necessity to listen to young people.
What specifically will you do to make sure that students who are identified as at-risk get the services that they need?
Let's start with TJ and then we'll go all the way down.
At-risk is a legal category that starts in fifth grade, and it's a wide variety of different measures puts you in the category. So the answer is that the services they need are differ by student. And I think that speaks to my more general approach, which is that we need to listen to the people who need, who know the students best. We need to listen to what our classroom teachers, what our social workers, what our family members tell us the students' needs are. And at the board level, then we provide the tools, the environment, to give them what they think the students need. And you don't just, you know, hand them a blank check, you use some critical judgment on it, and you balance the budget and you balance the priorities. But we need to have those voices at the table because I don't know the needs of students like a teacher does, like a parent does. I can't at the board level, but I can create the conditions and provide the supports needed, and that's what we need to do at the board level, be it curricular, be it...
There are many reasons that drive students to be under the category of at-risk. So I think at the board level, to understand what are the root causes of that qualification and to understand if it's a systemic issue around housing stability, for example, or mental health, or alcohol, drug abuse issues, or significant trauma. So there are many different reasons why students get in those categories. So understanding what they are and need, but to address that accurately, I think it is really important, and also to understand the root causes of it. One of the things that I really would like to work on once in the school board is to move away from pro-ways and sort of like cookie-cutter models that we often lean towards and more systemic, comprehensive systemic to address the issues.
So in addition to listening to the parents of kids who are at risk of not graduating, I think we need to listen to the kids who are at risk of not graduating. If elected to the school board, I will make a point of sitting down and listening to these young people and finding out why they don't want to go to school, why school's not exciting for them, where they want to go with their lives, what their career interests are, because I think that's the starting point for making sure that school is relevant for them. Some of the tools that we use to try to address the needs of at-risk students include credit replacement, summer school, alternative education settings. I think we need to make sure that these options for students are rigorous and giving them a quality education. They can't just be ways of warehousing kids. And finally, I think the city education committee is a place that, where we can actually engage the parents and the youth to hopefully get the city and the district and the county working together to better meet the needs of at-risk kids.
So I think we need to identify children as early as possible. In our school, or TJ said, in the public school, students are identified as at-risk and sometimes as special needs until fifth grade, but we do it as early as two and three years old. So we have several young people being served in our school already, and I think any school can do that, which is why I want there to be more standards placed on the early education centers that our school district is partnering with, those 33 centers, and they can achieve these goals. I also think we've got to provide coaching to parents. I also think we've got to provide coaching to parents, but not coaching in the sense of you're doing something wrong, but figuring out how do we help them better their lives and move forward and pursue their goals, regardless of where they are socio-economically. I think we need to look at creating networks of support within schools so that families who are at risk can get some support. We use the FAST program at our school. And then additional tutoring for young people, but personalized tutoring for young people in the schools so that we're actually focusing on their challenges. And then lastly, no social promotion. I think we should implement my Madison Prep year. If a kid comes to us more than a year behind, they get a year to focus on skill building so we're not passing failure for.
Well, I think that many of the at-risk kids that we're talking about do have behavioral issues. And certainly Judge Everett Mitchell's talked about kids being traumatized by abusive, neglectful, absent parents, and the conditions that they have to live in sometimes. But I think we have to get to those kids and tell them that we have the means here to help them. You know, go ahead and ask the kids what they need. If they knew what they needed, they'd ask for it. And I think a lot of these kids really don't know what's out there, what's possible. I do think, and I agree with TJ, we have, you know, the school board creates the conditions. We have something called positive behavior coaches, which I'd never heard of before. When those positive behavior coaches get thrown under the bus trying to restore order in a classroom and using all the techniques that they've learned and whatnot, and they get basically race shame and turning into an incident, which should have been and was a behavior incident, and turning that into a race incident, I think throws a lot of teachers under the bus. If I'm a positive behavior coach and I get that call, I'm going to say I'm on break. Why would I risk my career?
I think when you're talking about meeting the needs of at-risk young people, what you're talking about is investing in young people who historically have not been invested effectively. I think you're talking about employment opportunities for their families within the district. I think you're talking about expansions on opportunities within arts. I think you're talking about making sure every young person who is talented and gifted or advanced learner in a specific area is recognized as such, no matter what demographic background they have. So I think, you know, looking at how do we invest in best practices? How do we invest in things that are proven to work for young people who are experiencing housing instability, who are experiencing poverty? I think really examining what are the interventions we have right now. So one of the things I've noticed in going into the schools is the way that we feed kids who are living in poverty. There's anything I think our district should be ashamed of is what we call free or reduced lunch. I think that it sets young people up to fail. I think that it doesn't provide appropriate nutrients. And I think it sends a very clear message to young people that we are not sincerely interested in taking care of them or making sure that their needs are met.
TJ, do you want to use your card?
First off, I think our lectures have gotten a lot better, but our breakfasts are an absolute mess. But what I wanted to talk about was something universal that asks for students, which is attendance. And that attendance has been, you know, it's totally, you've got to be there to learn. And we've had one initiative lately with Dean County United Way, was rolled out with big press conferences, turned out to be a dismal failure and never heard of it again. The data was never released, but we need to do better. And this is a place where we do need to listen to families, and we need even to listen to educators to learn why there are barriers to attendance. And so combining those, the board's role is to identify the problem and the process by which we can get at it.
Colleen, you can go ahead for three seconds.
Another thing we can do is redefine the focus of our social work a little bit or provide additional assistance. We had a parent that, he knew this all the time, which is an example. We had a parent that came to us, the child's been having some behavior issues. We met with them, got to the bottom, and we do this with all of our families, coming to find out the child's mother has bipolar issues and is not taking her medication. So she's spiraling out of control. The auntie had to take the kid in. She was in tears, we're trying to figure it out. Well, she didn't have enough food to feed the child, she needed a bed. We got all that stuff for her. And I think that those are things that we should be doing for families in our schools.
Thank you. Go ahead, Magason.
What metrics should the Madison School District be looking at to evaluate its success?
So we'll switch this up a little bit. David, if you could start this question, we'll follow with Ali, and then Colleen, we work our way back.
Well, I think, you know, closing that achievement gap, you know, we were at one forum, and they're all concerned about Act 10, they're all concerned about barbecue schools, they're concerned about everything. But rather than trying new ways, new ideas, like Colleen had, for instance, I think one of the metrics we have to look at is we can't have 60% of our African-American students reading below basic proficiency. In this economy with exact sciences and epic and whatnot, to be functionally illiterate is to be doomed. I'm afraid for these kids. And we need to stop saying we don't have to listen to the police, we don't have to listen to the librarian. I think it helps if they listen to the teacher, they might learn something. This is a metric I would look at. People are voiding with their feet. And it's simply because we're getting a very bad reputation at the very school board level. It's in the TV news and some of the crime that we've had. I think we have to be very, very strict on that.
Yes, I think the most important information we can gain comes from teachers and educators. And I think part of the information we're looking for is information that reconciles a narrative that we've been sold, that is, if we do what's right for young people, we are somehow doing what's wrong for educators. I think that we need to examine how we do right for both populations, right? So what does student climate look like for young people? What does teacher morale look like? How are we retaining educators? And how are we promoting and supporting educators throughout their career within our district? So how many of our educators are going on to pursue, you know, master's degrees or PhDs and staying within the district? How are we supporting them in that pursuit of education? How are we customizing professional development in ways that is not kind of a one-size-fits-all form of approach, but actually meets the specific needs of educators? I also think that we have to look at the growth of our district as a measurement of our success. We should not be a district where the best educational opportunity somebody on the Florida East side can get is closer to them if they go to some prairie. We have to be a district that expands and includes more schools to include more students.
Colleen?
Could you ask, could you ask that one more time?
What metrics should the Madison School District be looking at to evaluate its success?
I think definitely academic testing data. But, you know, we de-emphasize testing in our school. We don't use it as a pressure point for our teachers. Because we really want them to lighten up the educational program for our children. So I think that's one. I think we also have to look at how much time in professional development our teachers are engaged in, how much planning time they get, and how they're utilizing the time within the classroom, how much time we're spending on tasks with children versus pulling children in and out of classrooms. And then we need to look at that for students in special education also, because oftentimes, they're not given the adequate level of education they deserve. And then I also think we should be looking at frequency of visits for families, which we don't really do, we don't go to them. I think we should be looking at things like that. We should look at frequency of contact between the schools and the families, how often are they coming to us, we have to look at that. And then are the families getting better? Because often, a child's success is an extension of the success of their parents. And there are holistic indicators we can use, assessments to use to try to fit.
Ali, do you want to use your card right now? All right, Chris. So standardized test scores, school climate, graduation attendance, these are the big metrics we use to evaluate our success. I think we need to be nuanced in how we look at them. We shouldn't overemphasize standardized test scores, and I think we need to look at growth as well as proficiency when we're looking at our kids. We do want to get a kids with proficiency level, but growth does matter. It shows that we're making progress. We need to, we need to take staff retention seriously. Our staff retention data right now is scary. Since 2010, the number of staff leaving the Madison Metropolitan School District before they're eligible for retirement has quintupled, it's gone up five times. And we don't know why that is happening, because I don't think the district does exit interviews, or if they do, they don't make the information public.
They don't feel safe.
They don't feel safe. We also need to look at inclusion in special education and look at how much time special education students are spending in inclusive classrooms and not segregated.
I'd like to propose a holistic approach to looking at our measurements, looking at student parent climate surveys, how they are feeling the schools are being safe and healthy communities. Also looking at data from teachers and staff, and also measuring engagement, both from students and also parents. The other three data points that I often, are my go-to, GPA, behavioral referrals, and attendance, I think they kind of paint, with broad strokes, a picture of what's going on. And I would emphasize, you know, what's happened in the second grade level, seventh grade, and 10th grade.
Lots of good ideas here. First up on standardized tests, I think we need to look at the basic and below movement out of that, kind of a cohort thing, a growth thing. And those are the students who are in danger of being functionally illiterate, and those are where we have to concentrate. Climate survey data and behavior data. Behavior data tends to be corrupt because people don't report accurately because of pressures to make themselves look good. Climate survey data is one tool we have, and we've improved using that so far. GPAs are good, teacher retention is a good measure. Course taking, what courses are our students taking? What access do they have to various enrichment courses? And particularly when you get to high school, how are they getting to the advanced courses? How are they getting to the more sophisticated courses, which aren't necessarily labeled advanced? Things like world languages, things like the arts, things like computers classes. That tells us a lot about it. People do vote with their feet, and I do think that a cohort survival rate for our students, if you look at that, it's a really scary measure. We lose about 200 students per grade, per year in elementary school every year, and they're not replaced.
Ali, you can go ahead for ten seconds.
So in terms of measurements that we're already using, one of the reasons that I am not a supporter of standardized testing is because we actually lose a tremendous amount of instruction time to standardized testing. So students who are behind are falling more behind while taking standardized testing because they're not actually getting the support that they need. And I think that we need to reclaim that time. The other thing is, when you're talking about a world-class education, which is what we should be doing in the face of globalization, you would be talking about PUA, which has established 100% literacy. You'd be talking about Finlay, which has one of the most competitive education systems in the world. Neither of those two education systems have embraced standardized testing every year or anywhere near the amount of standardized testing we have perpetrated against students.
Thank you. All right, so this next question, we were, we're going to move on to more of the individual seats. And so this one will be for TJ and Ananda. Ananda, if you can go first.
Can you tell how many questions are allowed, just so we can...
So there's this one and three more, so four total for closing statements. All right. So this one has a little bit more context, just for a warning for you all. Access to advanced learning and extended day learning opportunities is an issue in our community, in particular for students of color. This question was submitted to us by Chris Gomez-Smitch, Smitch? Of the Madison Partnership for Advanced Learning. The 2019-2020 proposed Madison School District budget includes strategic equity projects. One proposal addresses recommendations made by an advanced learning adversary committee made up of district staff and Madison School District parents. The committee is working through an Office of Civil Rights Resolution process and looks to address racial disparities in access to and preparation for advanced coursework. This recommendation includes increasing the advanced learning staff to 1.0 FTE, or full-time equivalent, staff from current 0.5 FTE levels. For every K through eight schools, in order to provide a talent development program for underrepresented students and a systematic structure for advanced learning in every school. The question is, if elected, will you support funding this recommendation? Do you consider Madison School District's ongoing civil rights compliance review process important? Warranting close examination by board members, why or why not?
Okay, first, yes, to the staff. I think it's really important to have a, I mean, like, this is about investing, right? Like, this is how we show our priorities to our students and to our families, is how we allocate resources. So allocating a full-time staff, I think, is really important. And yes, to continue to making sure that we are not only compliant, like without only meeting minimum requirements, but we actually spending on that. I think one of the critical issues around advanced learners is definitely like just the comprehensive services. But we, when we talk about students of color, the struggles of identification of those students, which has to do with many different things that happens in the building and how families navigate the education system, how teachers may have biases around students with, like myself, broken English or have parents that are non-English speakers, or students with IBS who also be advanced learners.
Thank you. TJ?
First off, yes, I think the process and monitoring it and monitoring the success of our advanced learning program is very, very important. To the question of whether I will support that budget move, the answer is no. It's approximately $2 million in a budget that is very, very difficult to balance already. We're hearing increase in class sizes, we're hearing cuts to interventionists, we're hearing cuts all over the district to things. And until we get a full handle on it, a $2 million investment here is not something I can support. And I do think that what we have with the Advanced Learner Plan is that it's an unfocused plan. We're promising everything to everybody. We're identifying upwards of 20% of students as quote "advanced learners." I think we need to concentrate on the top 5 or 10% on one hand, and then the talent development piece for historically underrepresented groups on the other hand. Otherwise, we're setting ourselves up for failure. We can't live up to the promises we're making with this. And so I think that the focus needs to be better on it. But I can't support a $2 million investment at this time, and almost double it.
So the state of Wisconsin right now is looking at a model where we scaffold up. So we often think about scaffolding as down, like as meeting students and lower standards. We actually scaffolding up, so using standards for our advanced learners as on top and making sure that students, that we move students up to those levels. And I think that is going to be very beneficial, and it's something that I would like to explore as a school board.
No, you're not even seeing.
All right, Chris, go ahead.
So TJ, I believe the fact that we've dealt with the opposite of the Civil Rights Resolution by just casting a wider net to identify more kids of color. And in reality, I think the research has shown that the best way to identify kids of color, advanced learners, is to have black teachers identify black children. So if we were to hire more advanced learning IRTs at some level, and may not be one FTE per school, I think we need to focus on bringing in IRTs of color.
Would anyone else like to chime in?
But he's like, "I already do." All right. So I've worked in advanced learners throughout my career, and currently G-Safe provides a course within the district that is Foundations of Leadership. There are five areas of advanced learners. One of those areas is leadership, and one of those areas is performance arts. And we have not supported those areas of advanced learning. All students benefit from being told they're intelligent. And so when we're investing in advanced learners, we're also investing in special education. We're also investing in all of our very diverse young people being able to have opportunities to recognize their talents at school. Advanced learners is a highly unstable program in our district. It's had five directors in the last five years. I think bringing stability and emphasis to that program is deeply important.
Let's check in again, we do have two questions and one for the group. And Ali, David, and TJ have one more card to use, everyone else should be pretty good.
I also have one.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. And so, Colleen, do you want to go ahead?
I have two cards.
I'm actually on my card size.
So $2 million isn't a lot of money, you guys, when we're blowing money on Chromebooks for middle school. Those Chromebooks are a disaster. I've got pictures on my phone, and I've showed the administration of kids playing Magic Football and Fortnite and other things in our classrooms. We have money to pay for things like that. However, I also think, you guys, it is high time for us to challenge the state of Wisconsin for additional form of funding for our public schools. And if elected to the school board, I'm an organizer, if we have to sue the state legislature for additional resources for our children, we will. Because we cannot provide them the quality education they deserve without the money.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, great. So this next question is for Chris and Colleen. Chris, if you could start. We provide the candidates copies of the new United Way Academic Success Mobilization Plan. This plan was rewritten by a committee chaired by Superintendent Cheatham. This raises some concerns. The new plan seems to downplay specific measures of reading and math while shifting focus toward SEL, or social emotional learning. All of us agree that a balanced approach, core academics blended with additional, or excuse me, additional attention to... excuse me, additional attention to SEL, is best for kids. Our question is not about SEL versus academics, rather, our question examines ways of making public policy. Have you read this rewritten plan? Do you think this plan reflects the Madison School District's policy preferences? And if so, or, excuse me, and if it does reflect the policy, should this be the way public policy happens in Madison?
I have read the plan. I don't know the process that was used to come up with that plan. I know the plan was not developed with public board input, to the best of my knowledge. I think processes to come up with plans like this need to involve the community, and need to involve staff, and need to involve students in a much more meaningful way. There's some good stuff in there. They talk about trying to overcome the summer slump, they talk about, they do talk about the importance of kindergarten readiness, they talk about third grade reading and ninth grade algebra. I think I would like to see a plan with a lot more specifics about how we are actually going to get to these things, particularly when it comes to early grade literacy and numeracy. I think that a good plan would include the types of interventions we need, the types of teacher training that we need, and the types of literacy strategies we should be using so that our kids succeed.
I haven't seen the plan, but I can tell you some things we can do. You know, Governor Evers shouted us out a couple of times, one city, because a lot of people, we aren't working closely with a lot of institutions, including NMSD, to try to experiment with these things. Right now, there's no funding and things like that for kindergarten readiness specifically. There's no funding for summer learning programs unless you go to HUD, I mean, go to the U.S. Public Education. We basically created a model, and our results are that we've got 94% of our babies ready for kindergarten this year, 89% last year. So we have a longer school day, longer school year. What we're doing within those programs is what people have said we should be doing. These aren't necessarily organic innovations that we're utilizing, but what we're showing is that the results are there, if we get the resources. And what we hope to do is challenge the state to, at the very least, allow us to create a pilot, or at the most, allow us to support more resources for these types of things across the state.
Yeah, this is exactly how public policy should actually be made. It was made behind closed doors, with only invited people at the table. You and I, our teachers, our families, had no idea what was going on here, and we can't... And if you read the document, it is spinning things left and right, it is superficial data analysis, things like that attendance program I talked about, that's mentioned in there. It never mentions it's absolutely failed. This is a public relations effort, and that's what's wrong with how policies are being made. This is absolutely wrong, which is why we need to open up processes. Public education needs public processes.
Would anybody else like to chime in? I won't count that as a yellow card. All right, so this question is for Ali and David. David, start this question, please. So according to a recent story in the Wisconsin State Journal, the Madison School District could ask voters next year to pay for upgrades ranging between $120 million and $260 million. The Wisconsin State Journal reported that district administrators have not yet presented options and dollar amounts to board members, but given this recent news, how will you vote and what will you support in terms of tax increases and referendums?
Well, you know, that's the interesting thing about public education, isn't it? It's public. I was just kind of backfilling TJ a little bit, when you have the public that's afraid to go to a school board meeting, I don't know how you're going to get that participation. We, you know, we, you know, I've shown this before, we have people, this is, people voting with their feet. I mentioned the 804 students leaving the district and they're living in, and they still live in Madison. They took with them $5.67 million. That's the amount of money that taxes these students. We're going to have a trouble, a difficult time if we don't get control of our classrooms. That is, I think, the bottom line, is we are losing that kind of support from our citizens. And also, I think, from the legislature, when they see, you know, Colleen, you can go to Madison and you can go to the legislature, but you're going to see people there from Wusburg and other places, you're going to say, "What's going on in Madison schools?" And you can't even control your own classrooms, and you want more money. That's going to be a problem.
One of the reasons I'm running for school board is to unite us for public education, and I think one of the things that our community has demonstrated over and over again is that we are in support of our schools, we're in support of our students, we're in support of our teachers, and so when we have gone to our community and asked for funding through referendum before, our community has overwhelmingly been in support of that investment in education. I think we are obligated to produce facilities that are safe and that are sound, and I think the honest truth is, is that we have many facilities that are, you know, are recognized as historic features of this community and that need to be updated desperately. And that's about making safe work environments for educators, but also environments that both educators, young people, and families can take pride in being at. And so I think we have to reimagine education, and I think that means that we absolutely need to invest funding in, you know, the foundation of education, which is our schools and our buildings, and the places that we send our kids to every day.
So Chris, if you could go ahead?
So I fully support building maintenance and upgrades. However, I want to put in perspective how big of an ask this is. In 2015, we passed a maintenance referendum for $41 million, and in 2016, we passed an operational referendum of $26 million. You put those two together, that's half of what we're asking for in this referendum, just for facilities, and the operational referendum will expire. That referendum is keeping our class sizes small, that referendum is making sure we have adequate staffing in our schools, and that, for me, is a really high priority. So we have to make sure that this building ask doesn't compromise our ability to staff our schools.
Go ahead, Colleen.
Verona's building a $180 million high school, one. Sun Prairie built an $88 million high school, one school. We are a much bigger district, and we're talking about proportionally investing a lot less money in our children here. If your budget is truly what you value, where do you think children are valued more?
Come on.
That's all I've got to say.
Would anyone else like to chime in? All right, great, thank you. So there's one last question. Adriana Lardini, she will ask the last question, and this one will be to all candidates, and we will start with TJ with this one. And so, Ananda?
All right. So this question is regarding the consideration of transparency and the public's right to know. In your judgment, do you feel improvements are needed, and what improvements would you suggest? And is transparency and the public's right to know an important issue in this campaign?
I think it's a huge issue in our schools, and I would start with having more board committees and more things come before board committees. Under our agreement under, there were six committees that met regularly. Under Dan Yer, there were four, we now have two. Used to be every consent agenda item was before the board twice, now it's only before the board once, getting information, getting budget information. We just, last, two weeks ago, got information on the current district's school, this year's school staffing, building level staffing information. We need more information. This is how we build trust, this is how we find the best answers. We, you know, the board doesn't have all the answers, the administration doesn't have all the answers, but when we open up our processes and we open up our information and we show that trust in our community, then we can together work towards better answers and improvement. So I think that transparency is huge. It's why I'm running again.
Reason that I am running for office in 2019 is because when my daughter started attending kindergarten, I learned that I needed to learn a lot to navigate the education system and to become an advocate for her. And it was through parent leadership classes that I learned the governance of schools, policies, and practices that were impacting her education. So, you know, when we talk about transparency, we need to make sure that our parents, in particular, our parents of color and immigrant parents, have the information that they need to in order for them to know what questions to ask and how to ask those questions. I would support collaborative approaches, and also, the board needs to engage in informal ways to engage our communities and our families. Why does everybody need to go to the Doyle Building? And I remember when I was organizing Parents and Most Shroom for our new building, most of our parents have no idea where Doyle was or the Coliseum. So understanding that in Madison, we have diverse communities that don't have access to downtown in the same ways that other communities do, and we need to change that.
I think our district needs to do a lot better in this regard. I remember back when the district used to do public budget hearings all over the community that were open meetings, now budget hearings are comments before a regular board meeting. That's how far we have slipped in terms of actually going out to the community and offering open public meetings where people can engage. I'm going to give an example of how the lack of transparency is impacting us. In, a while back, I think it was about a year and a half ago, the district had to revise its wellness policy to be in compliance with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and they tried to slip a really weak, really cutback wellness policy into an agenda, assuming nobody would notice. I noticed, I showed up, I spoke out. The district had to put on the brakes and had to engage community partners in spending a nine-month process of writing a really strong, meaningful wellness policy that included things like outdoor education and better food and more time to eat it. The public shouldn't have to go to board meetings and stop processes. These kinds of open processes need to be part of our daily work.
Oh, I need to answer the questions?
It's for everybody.
Man, I'm trying to be quiet up here. I agree with everything that they've said, actually. I don't think that the district should be involved in setting significant policy, that we don't tell the community as much as we can about it, and that we don't involve people in it. You know, I think we should make a policy that we won't pass any particular serious, especially when it comes to resource use, without having a certain type of community engagement. I'll just say that, because I think they were all very eloquent.
Well, this is a true story. So first of all, ADHOC committees will have citizens on it, which is a good thing, and school board members. So Dave Laska went to talk to the ADHOC committee on school resource officers, and I identified that we should keep them. Then the chanting began. Dean Loumos, the chairman of the committee, stood up and turned on that as if we were in a packed room, he said, "David, can you finish?" I said, "Well, I don't think I can." I thought he'd say, "Well, we'll quiet him down." No. So I said, "Well, I'll sit down." The meeting was recessed, so I could get the members that had fled out into the hallway, brought them back so we could have a call, and then apologized for allowing me to speak. He said, "I did not know that the previous speaker would use code words." Now, at the next meeting, I got there early, I said, "Dean, what code words did I use?" Dean Loumos is a member of the school board. Dean said, "Oh, David," he said, "I just said that to get them off my back. Do you wonder why citizens are afraid to come to a school board meeting? That's not open, that's not transparent. Everyone should have an option to be heard and heard respectfully, in the school board meetings and in the classroom."
I think one of the interesting things about talking about transparency or talking about accountability is that often people place that away from themselves. And so I think what we have to talk about is our role in being transparent board members. How are we going to communicate and be available to the people that we serve? And how are we going to be accountable to our record? Are we going to make sure people know what we're voting for and why? I think that it's a very relevant thing that we be able to be accountable to people, to be able to answer people's questions, to be available to people, and that we be in the community so that people are aware of how to get a hold of us and who we are. I think transparency means engaging in dialogue. I think it means not just talking about what you like or what you think people want to hear, but really answering to the community about the decisions that you're making in their interest.
Is this the last question? Was this the last? This was the last question, so you can. So Chris, we'll start with Chris first, and then Ananda.
So the reality of life in the Madison Metropolitan School District right now is that increasingly, the administration is making decisions behind closed doors, and the school board is letting them get away with it. The administration is accountable to the school board, the school board is accountable to the voters, and it feels, that type of a process where decisions are made behind closed doors feels backwards. As a school board member, I will try to make that chain of accountability work the way it's supposed to work.
I think it's important to have a person that have experienced the lack of transparency in the district. My daughter attends LaFala High School, and a couple of years ago, we were really excited with the personalized pathways. Two years later, we're learning that the reason that we're changing our block schedule, which is something that LaFala is really proud to have, into a regular schedule is because of the personalized pathways, and we're just now learning that same information after the fact, and being called a stakeholder meeting when we were just told the things. We have also experienced teacher burnout and our students feeling like distrust with the school and the school leadership and our district.
Ali?
Yeah, so one of the models I'm really interested in is having kind of the ability to have an ongoing analysis of board members' decisions and also grading our board members. I think if we're a school district that is giving grades for our young people, that is assessing and evaluating our teachers, that we should have mechanisms to assess and evaluate the people on the school board, and I think that creates transparency. I also think that creates an authentic conversation in which people are informed about not just how school board members discuss problems, but also how school board members make decisions that allow for us to access solutions.
Thank you. David, Chris, do you have anything else to say?
Aren't you having a pretty well worn out?
Well, great, well, we're on our closing statements, and we will start with Ali, and you all have one minute for your closing statements.
I want to thank you all so much for taking the time this evening on this gorgeous day to be inside with us. I am running for school board because I believe our schools should be places where every single young person falls in love with learning. I'm running on a platform that is about making sure our young people have opportunities within arts and expression. I'm running on a platform that is about bringing us together and leveraging the collective power of our community to do what's in the best interest of our children. I believe the way we treat one another's children defines who we are as a society. I'm running on a platform that is about safe welcoming and inclusive schools, so making sure that young people have opportunities within their education to be fully supported in who they are. I am counting on your vote. We have the opportunity to reimagine education together over the course of the next few years. Please show up for the love of learning. Thank you all so much for being here. And thank you Simpson Street Free Press for doing this. This is like their third forum, so round of applause for them, y'all.
Yeah, I echo Ali's statements here. I think you've done a very professional job. I also enjoy your involvement in the Capital Times Forum, two of the best run forums we've had. We talked about giving voices to people. I agree with my, and I've gotten to know Ali here quite a bit, even though we just realized, and I think she's very congenial and friendly, and I appreciate that and hope that she feels the same about me. She talked about safe welcoming and inclusive schools. Randy Larson told me, "As a fully trained and licensed teacher working as a substitute, I had my glasses broken, had tires in my car in the parking lot and filed a slash. When kids threw a book at me, that wasn't reported either. When kids threw a chair across the room, not sure what the consequences were for that." Joe Vitale, with you, David, again, asked a school bus driver or school bus attendant, what kind of words come out of their mouth and how they behave? They can't keep drivers or attendants, it's so bad. Lori Peterson, from a friend of mine, a custodian at one of our elementary schools, quote, "The kids hit teachers, yell, and push them up against the lockers, and there's nothing the teachers can do about it." Jake Walters, in practically daily basis, goes on and on and on. I want to stop that and correct that, then we can keep kids in our school, we can get, we can pass a referendum.
So I've had a history over the last 25 years of doing things that people think are impossible. When I was a student at the university, people thought it was impossible to get more students of color on the campus, but I pushed them to create the People Program with the expectation that we would get more students onto that campus, and we're nearing 1,000 students with their college degrees. My campaign manager is a people scholar. DPI, something smaller, I was the head of the Affirmative Action Committee when I worked there in the 90s at Department of Public Construction. They said that they could only afford one or two affirmative action interns, and one summer, we increased it to 16. In Washington, D.C., I was responsible for leading an effort that exceeded the transformation of that district, and people didn't think we could get a voucher program, charter schools, and public school funding all together. It's over $700 million that's been invested in this through Congress and new money since 2004. And D.C., Madison, it was employment. People didn't think we'd get the private sector to open up jobs when I was at the Urban League. We've done that, that we could address issues of race, we put race on the table, and this charter school, which people didn't think we'd get off the ground, is doing quite well too. So I'm here to do the impossible for our kids in Madison. Thank you.
So I want to thank the Simpson Street Free Press, not just for hosting this forum, but also for just doing some really amazing education reporting in our city. I'm running on my track record as a public education advocate. Over the past dozen years, I have gone to a lot of school board meetings, I've talked with a lot of people about our public schools, and I've organized for change. And as an organizer, the way I work is I ask questions, I listen, and then I work with people to find common ground. That's the type of leadership I bring to the school board.
That's the type of leadership I bring to the school board. My top priority will be educational equity and opportunity for all students in our district. Every child deserves a world-class education in their local public schools. It's one thing to speak broadly about problems, and it's another thing entirely to be able to understand and articulate concrete solutions, and that is part of what I bring to the table. Strong public schools are at the heart of a healthy community and a democracy, and I know that we can work together so all children thrive in our schools. I'm asking for your trust and your support and your vote on April 2nd. Thank you.
Very grateful for being here, and thank you all for being here with us. Coming April 2nd, Madison has a choice, and I appreciate the last six years that my opponent has served in the school board, but we can no longer wait for change in Madison. My platform is to increase school support staff and increase mental health, comprehensive mental health supports in our schools, to establish a model for school safety that invests in proactive approaches and building community, and making sure that both students and teachers feel a sense of belonging in our schools. I have been a parent leader, a parent advocate, and feel ready to serve you and the school board. Vote Ananda for Public Schools on April 2nd, and make sure that you grab your sign as well. Thank you all for being here.
I want to thank the Simpson Street Free Press and everyone who's here tonight. I'm running on my record, my record of accomplishments, I've passed more budget and policy and partnership amendments than any other board member. I'm running on my record of commitment to our community, and my record of commitment to transparency, and shared decision-making. On my way, even a couple hours before I was here today, Nagasi posted this story, and it really kind of sums up what I think is important and why I'm asking for your support. We have a school, a very, very difficult school, located on the edge of Fitchburg, where they're experiencing, apparently through this budget, extreme staffing cuts. I've been watching this situation for years, I advocated in favor of this school. As a board member, I have pushed back against the board, the administration, the board leadership, the board leadership, which is supporting three people here, to get public processes, to get board decision-making instead of administrative decision-making, and I will continue to push because this is the need necessary.
Again, thank you so much for all the candidates, thank you for being here, we really appreciate that. And thank you to our journalists, Nagasi Tesco-Michael from the Capital Times, Jenny Peet from ISMS, and Ogan Rogi from the Wisconsin State Journal, and of course, Adriana Nardini from Simpson Street Free Press, and thank you, audience, for being here as well. So if we can give a round of applause. Thank you, and I'm sure maybe some of the candidates will stay for a little bit if you want to chat individually, so thank you, guys.